Good evening. I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, July 18th, and we are beginning our meeting tonight at 7:05 PM. Hope everybody's doing well. As usual, our meeting tonight is being broadcast live by PAT and also our minutes are being taken by a recording secretary and being livestreamed on typical locations. Just to mention, anybody that would like to call in and speak during the public participation, just please raise your hand and we'll bring you into the meeting at that time. I'd like to first start with the meeting with a call to order, a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. And we did want to have a dedication of the moment of silence for a wonderful lady in the city of Peabody. I wanted to turn it over to Mr. Olympio, maybe for the, some words about the dedication tonight. Mr. Olympio?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, so unfortunately, last week Gina Placido passed away. Anybody that grew up in Peabody that played any type of sports, she was part of our childhood. She covered sports really on the North Shore for the past, I would say, 50 years. Growing up, she covered Little League, the high school, St. John's Prep, anything that related to sports on the North Shore. She was very passionate about it. And over the last, I'd say, 10, 15 years, I always liked her pieces with, she would follow students from the past and see what they're doing in their adulthood. And I, she always did a fantastic job. It's a great Peabody family. Her hus- her late husband was also a sports writer and they were kind of like a tag team effort in the eighties and the nineties. But just a wonderful family, wonderful woman, and she's going to be sorely missed. And the last few years, I followed her all the time on Twitter with the girls' basketball and softball and just, she wasn't going to slow down. So it was definitely a surprise and a shock to the community. But just keep her family in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olympio. That was beautifully said, beautifully said. So please join me, stand for a moment of silence for Gina Placido and then the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Next, we will go to our minutes. We do have minutes from the June 27, 2022, excuse me, 23 regular school committee meeting. I'd open those up for discussion and vote.
Motion to receive and approve.
Second.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. You've heard the motion for approval of the June 27, 2023 regular school committee meeting minutes. That motion was seconded by Mr. Swanson. Roll call, vote for approval, please.
Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Present.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you. Our next item is approval of bills. We do have two warrants. I'd like to turn it over to you, Mr. Olympio.
Thank you. I'd like to approve warrant number 5119 in the amount of $231,291.74 dated July 18, 2023, subject to audit.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mr. Olympio for approval of warrant number 5419, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. Roll call, vote please for approval.
Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant number 5420 in the amount of $482,073.50 dated July 18, 2023, subject to audit.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mr. Olympio for approval of warrant number 5420. That motion was seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. Roll call, vote for approval, please.
Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item, item four, continued business. We do have three items on a continued business today. Mrs. Dunn, I'd like to turn it over to you. Any update on the Welsh School MSBA project?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, as always, the project is moving along at a very rapid pace and they're on track to complete the work so that the students are going to be in their new classrooms to start this school year. We have a Welsh School Building Committee meeting Thursday morning, the 27th, at 9:30 a.m. That's available on Zoom. It's a public meeting. Everyone's invited to attend and you can hear more updates and see some photos of what's going on. But it really is amazing to see what's being done at the school. Presently, they are still working to figure out about the roof leaks. They have been longstanding leaks and they're working to find out how best to repair those and how to apportion the cost on that. I'm really very pleased, and I think you would be too, to see what our OPM does on the money for this project to make sure that the city is very well protected with any of the things that go on with this project. So that's one thing that's going on. There will be a new floor in the gym and that's going to be put down, oh my goodness, I'm sorry, after, I believe it's after school begins. But they're doing work and they're now getting ready for it. There's a lot of preparation work to do and it's just moving right along. If you go down, you will notice that some trees were removed. Trees are going to be replaced. The landscaping is going to be done. And presently, they have put in all of the granite curbstones. They'll be pouring cement sidewalks out front and putting down new paving in front with some really good safety features, too. So it looks really nice. Very positive project. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Appreciate that update. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Our next item, strategic plan. Mrs. Dunn, anything to mention tonight?
Actually, I think it's just here as continued business, but I would just like to ask that we put that over to our retreat for further discussion. We already took a vote to continue the plan as currently written and then we're going to be in the process of making plans on what we want to keep and perhaps update. So that's all.
Terrific. Thank you. And last item under continued business this evening is the superintendent's evaluation. I'd turn it over to you, Mrs. Dunn, to...
Actually, the superintendent, Dr. Vedala, has prepared his presentation for us that we will be evaluating him on. And after receiving that, I'm going to make sure that I speak with Dr. Vedala about the terms and the questions that go into the evaluation. And then after that's all set, you should be receiving evaluation forms in the next week or so. And then we will have another timeline of when you need to complete the evaluations and turn them in. So the process is moving on. That's all I'm going to address, but I know in his report, Dr. Vedala is going to give us a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. I did want to mention, we have all our school committee members here today, but I wanted to make special mention of Joe Amico who's joining us today. He's actually on vacation, but because of some important items that we're addressing today, we appreciate Joe zooming in and taking part in this meeting. So thank you, Mr. Amico.
I hope he's having good weather.
I feel like the summer hasn't even begun yet, really.
I know.
Excellent. So we'll go now to item five, the superintendent's report. And Dr. Vedala, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Three items on superintendent's report. We just have two quick items that I'd like to go through first and then we can get into the evaluation report. So the first item is, I'd like to extend a heartfelt thank you for the generosity of Peabody resident Yanni Manalocas. Yanni owns Quick Manufacturing in Danvers and he's generously donated $5,000 to the Peabody Public Schools to start National STEM Honor Societies in four of our schools and with the hope to expand them. So Peabody Veterans Memorial High School, Higgins Middle School, the South Elementary and the Welch Elementary will be the first four schools to start National STEM Honor Society. Special thanks to Ken Hecht, who is a big property owner in Peabody and just a wonderful philanthropist. And he's also, you know, just very involved in this. And he is the one who connected us with Yanni and he's really a champion for this STEM work. So I just wanted to put this out there with a big thank you to Yanni. They have a big check that they'd like to present. We want to do that at one of the schools. We'll take a photo and we'll get some media coverage for it. But I wanted to put this on the agenda and just publicly thank Yanni for his generosity. And it's a very exciting opportunity for a lot of our kids. So the money, the $5,000 will go, split up between each of the schools. It'll pay for the annual fee to be a member of the National STEM Honor Society. But then additionally, there's money built in for supplies for the students to be able to do STEM activities and projects and things like that. So we're very excited to be able to start this.
And if I could, Dr. Vedala, just to add to that, I did want to also mention those two individuals, both I've known for a long time. Yanni was a couple of years younger than me in school, but an excellent student athlete, wonderful young man who's had great success with his career and wanted to give back to the city, which was terrific and greatly appreciated. Doesn't surprise me. He's a wonderful, wonderful young man. And also Ken Hecht. Ken has known him a long time as a property owner that Dr. Vedala mentioned, very generous. He supported a number of other things in our community, another number of other programs. And their excitement for this project, you can just feel it during our meetings. And I'm very appreciative for Dr. Vedala and his team to bring this forward and start to bring this to life. A lot of work has gone into this, but this is a wonderful program and something that very few have in this area. And I think it's going to be wonderful for our city and a number of our students. So thank you to both of them. And I just also wanted to make sure I was heard on that. Mrs. Dunn?
Motion received with gratitude.
Okay, you've heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olympio. All in favor? That's a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item is the bullying prevention and intervention policy review. So we have several laws governing bullying prevention and intervention. So a MASH General Law, Chapter 71, Section 37O, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, 603, Regulation 49.00, sort of spells out what we need to do as an obligation. And of course, the school committee has the policy, JICFB, which was adopted in 2010 and then revised in 2013. It's reviewed annually as part of the student handbooks, but Mrs. Dunn and I were talking about the policy. We've been doing some work and there's some recent updates that have been recommended. So I'd like to make a recommendation that we refer the revised draft policy to quality and standards in that subcommittee and then we'll review that and bring it back to the committee. So there's a couple of little changes that Mrs. Dunn already has that we'd like to review, though, as a committee. And then the bullying and intervention plan that goes in the handbooks, we'd like to get those updated so that we can distribute those. So Mrs. Dunn, anything I missed on that?
No, you did a good job on that one. And I would like to make a motion that it be referred to quality and standards. And just to let the committee, subcommittee know, we need to take quick action on it so it can get into the student handbooks in time for the new school year. So make a motion that that be referred to quality and standards for review of the new terms that need to be added into that policy. So move it.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. You've heard that motion, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. All in favor of that motion as well? Unanimous vote. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So now on to the superintendent's evaluation report. So just kind of a review, this is a year-long process. Last August, we had our district improvement plans and our goals for the district that were voted on and approved by the committee, which I appreciate. I completed my self-assessment in September of '22 to sort of kick off the school year. And then throughout, from October to June, we had many school committee meetings where we tried to provide goal updates in our school presentations where our students got to present a lot of the work that they're doing. So this summer, you'll receive a report and then we can talk about it again at the next meeting, which is our school committee retreat, have an opportunity to discuss, you know, the sort of year end and how it rolls into next year and the goals that we want to set for next year and how we want to carry that out. So this is very timely and it's a good process here. So just as a recap, we have our two SMART goals, our student learning goal and our professional practice goal, and then the four standards. So our goal that we created last August was by June of '23, the Peabody Public Schools would foster a sense of hope for every student, every day that results in at least a 20% increase in the number of students meeting or exceeding expectations on state and local assessments. So the evidence that we have, we did the high-quality instructional materials implementation for our elementary ELA. We've created our data teams and we have our meetings at the schools. Had quite a bit of PD on instructional models, the science of reading, differentiation, inclusion and co-teaching. So in terms of goal one, we have a number of proficiency items. Was really impressed with our K-1 students for our early literacy. They increased in ELA and math 18.8%. In grades two through five, a lot of our students here really hit hard by the pandemic. We're still seeing growth, modest growth here, about 4.5% increase from fall '22, and then in math, about 2.8%. In grades six through eight, our reading proficiency is remaining consistent over time and our math proficiency is increasing by 1.9%. And then, so our work that we're doing in six through 12 for ELA and math, in ELA, we were the generous recipient of a grant, it's called the GLEAM grant, which is gaining literacy equity across Massachusetts. So that will begin this year. It's a lot of work we're going to do at the secondary level. And then our math work, we're working with the Higgins Middle School team and the high school to sort of create a six through 12 trajectory where students will be able to access advanced coursework earlier and earlier and create multiple pathways for them to get in. So previously, sixth graders were given, you know, a math course and then that sort of decided what they took in seventh grade. And if you took pre-algebra in seventh grade, it sort of puts you on a track to get into calculus. And so what we're trying to do is create more pathways for kids to be able to get into that so they can take the advanced coursework. We do have a couple graphs here. So this one is our early literacy. And so I was really impressed with, by implementing the new curriculum, these big gains that we saw in kindergarten and first grade. And we do see moderate gains in second through fifth grade. And we know that there's quite a bit of intervention that we want to do with our students and provide that opportunity for acceleration. So these were reading scores from fall to the spring. These are our math benchmark data from fall to spring as well. We're seeing, you know, slight increases across the board. And, you know, fourth grade, we saw that was a little bit flat. Fifth grade started lower, but made a bigger gain. So again, these are all information that we're taking on with the principals at the end of the year, talking to teachers about and how we're going to attack this for next year. And then each year, starting last year, we created math common assessments. So every elementary teacher provides a common assessment in grades K through five. And, you know, you can see from, the blue is when we implemented it last year and the red is this year. So we saw a big increase in kindergarten and moderate increases across the board. So again, this is information that we're looking at each year. We want to create bigger gains and make sure that we have more and more kids. So we're almost at the 75% of kids meeting or exceeding those expectations. So moving right along, seeing some positive growth. Math is an area that we'd like to look at the curriculum as well and see if we can get some updated materials for our teachers. Our second goal was our professional practice goal, which was our sense of belonging. And so we had created this was, the Peabody Public Schools will foster a sense of hope for every student, every day that results in an increased sense of belonging for students, staff and families as measured by our attendance data, graduation data, discipline rates as well as, as well as data that was obtained from surveys, observations and qualitative feedback. So this was a goal that we really focused on quite a bit. A number of our presentations to the school committee from our schools focused on the work that they were doing for a sense of belonging. We have our C-list teams in every school really working on that. We had our, Peabody High School did the climate and culture surveys for our students, our faculty and our families. We joined the Sense of Belonging Network. Dr. Higgins and his team were really working closely on that. We created an LPAC, which was an English learner parent advisory council. And so that was really a big step forward for Ms. Jackson and her team. We had a huge event at the Carroll School and one at the South School, really bringing in families. And we're working on our expansion for our CPAC and our CPAB, sort of joining them together. And Mr. Olympio's done some wonderful work in that. And of course, the schools, when they present, they talk a little bit about academics, but they really talked about that sense of belonging. I think that they did a lot of work this year in welcoming families back and having more events. So that was really some nice growth that we saw throughout the year. We do have the four standards that we go over. So much of the work that we do in teaching and learning is around instructional leadership at the district level and then the work that we do with the principals. We had a very successful implementation. So this slide is humanities on one side and STEM on the other side. Very successful implementation for our ELA curriculum this year. And we have ongoing support through some of the grants that we have to provide teachers with professional development. And I was really excited that we had 100 teachers do two days of professional development right after school, got out. And I was talking to a teacher today and, you know, she attended, she's talking about how excellent it was. And, you know, she said in years past, there'd be 15 to 20 people. And this year, there were 100 people who really wanted to participate. And she was excited about that. And she's taking on a leadership role in some of the work there. So it's really nice to see, you know, the culture that's developing of teachers really diving into the curriculum and doing the work for our students. And we're really excited about that. We had our first civic showcase here at the middle school, which was well-attended, that was supported by our civics grant for Generation Citizen and Primary Source. We did quite a bit of work with Holocaust and Genocide Studies, which was a real focus of the committee. And I was really proud of the work that we got and the partners that we had in the Laton Foundation, Facing History and Salem State University. And I think that Peabody's become a leader in that work, which I'm very proud of. We were awarded the GLEAM grant for six through 12. And we have a number of students participating in our spring board literacy program. So that's the free tutoring that we got. On the STEM side, we're looking at adopting high-quality instructional materials in science for grades six through eight. The teachers have done a wonderful job in that. We've aligned our benchmark assessments to allow real-time data for teachers. So we're doing those through Google surveys and Google assessments. And then we get the data right away so that they can look at that. We were awarded a grant here at the Higgins Middle School for Project Lead the Way, which is a technology grant. And they're really doing some wonderful things. And when I went to some of the STEM nights at the elementary schools, we had middle school students that were presenting at that. And Ms. Lawrence and her students would come down and they would do some STEM activities with our students, which was really exciting to see. We're also awarded a grant for ST Math, which is an online program for our elementary schools. The South School's really championing that and they've seen excellent growth over there. And then we're building the structure to pilot increased pathways for advanced math courses that I spoke about a little bit earlier. Couple other things that I wanted to continue in instructional leadership for some other learners, our English Language Department, they established the LPAC. We did the seal of bilingual literacy where we had a number of students who earned that seal of bilingual literacy on their diploma this year. And we realigned the curriculum standards to the 2020 WITA framework so that we have consistency and cohesiveness. We're seeing a big increase in the number of English learners that are coming to Peabody, partly because it's a really welcoming community. And we just want to make sure that we are establishing the structures in place to make sure that we can support them as learners. We implemented our data coaches this year, which worked out very well with our school leadership and our staff in K through five. And I think that really helped us to target areas that needed to improve and focus on personalizing the instruction for students. And then in our secondary, six through 12, we had 100 teachers join the differentiation, inclusion, co-teaching, professional development where they paid for two days to come in through the evidence-based practice grant that Dr. Chase was able to secure for us. And so again, we had, you know, a number of teachers coming in and really honing their practice. So a lot of things going on in standard one, which is instructional leadership. In standard two, management and operations, we did a lot of work here this year around school safety and sort of that sense of belonging. At the high school, did a lot of work where we were able to secure 29 high-definition cameras and 26 classroom door locks. Remember, we did that work over the December vacation. That was really important for our school safety work. We were able to conduct a safety needs assessment in each school building. And then we have the ID badge door access system in all of our elementary schools and the high school that is aligned with this program here at the Higgins. And that was something when we met with our safety experts that was really something they honed in on, that that's really important for our safety. And we have created ID badges in every cruiser that if there's an emergency, they can get to any school by responding. And there's no, they don't have to wait for a key or wait for somebody to access it. They can just code right in, which is really helpful. We collaborated to create the Peabody School Safety Task Force. We're coordinating the pilot safety program with Bus Patrol, which is very exciting. And so that's moving forward. We have three of our buses that we own and seven buses from Healy for our 10-bus pilot that will be going out this year. And then we got the Stop the Violence Grant that Keith Blum was able to work on with the mayor and through the mayor's office. And then we have our PVMHs threat assessment that we'll be doing this fall. So a lot of good work with management and operations. In terms of family and community engagement, this was a really great year for our families to be welcomed back into the schools, to bring back a number of programs and things. One of the big items that we are working on was the Welch School Building Project. So we have the relationships with the partners there, but also the coordination of students and staff that were displaced. That went really smoothly. And that was, you know, in large part because of our families and the relationships that we've developed with them. We opened our new children's museum downtown and we were able to create field trips for every first grade student in the district to be able to go there and really promote that. And that's been a wonderful partnership as well. We've expanded our Summer Eats program, established our LPAC, really strengthening our partnerships as well with Peabody Education Foundation, Citizens in, the police, the fire, EMS and Peabody Television. So really expanding our work with the community and reaching out to additional partners this year. And then finally, professional culture. We've done a lot of work with, first establishing a culture of professional learning with our teachers. And we've brought in high-quality partners. One of the things that our teachers said to us loud and clear was that they really wanted us to bring in experts in the field. So for example, our history teachers, when we brought in Facing History and ourselves, they really appreciated that work, including Generation Citizens and iCivics, Primary Source. Rebus and Associates has been a great partner for us in terms of working with our leadership and our evaluation and supervision. Worcester Polytech has been wonderful in the STEM department. And TNTP is an organization that has come in to provide professional development around the science of reading and things like that. That summer professional development, we've had over 200 teachers this year work in critical areas such as inclusion and science of reading. Very excited about that work. And then continue to focus on improving our culture and climate at Peabody Veterans Memorial High School. That's something that we've conducted surveys with our faculty and our students and families and really getting some great results on that, getting some traction. And just, you know, really happy about the work that we're doing around professional culture throughout the district. We, you know, see that many, many communities struggle with relationships between the professions. And I think we have a great relationship with our union. We were able to negotiate all of our contracts this year. And they're, you know, just a real partner. And I think that, you know, the work that the committee has done to build those relationships and the mayor has done, you know, has really contributed greatly to a real sense of a professional culture. So that's a snippet of, I know there's a lot going on. I also have packets for everyone that has a little bit more detail and some data, but I'm happy to answer any questions. I know this might be overwhelming. We do have our retreat to spend quite a bit of time as well. But I'd like to turn it over to the committee and see if there's any additional questions that you have or any other information that you'd like to see in any of the standards or any of our SMART goals.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Vedala. Good presentation. Any questions at this time for Dr. Vedala? Okay. Mrs. Dunn?
I'd just like to say thank you. There's a lot of information in there. And as I said earlier, we'll proceed through the evaluation process using the criteria set by the DESE. So that will be coming out to everyone shortly with the schedule for the turning in of the reports, you know. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. And I'd just like to say, too, it was quite an experience reflecting on the entire year and just thinking about how far we've come and all the things we've done. And, you know, Dr. Lord and Dr. Higgins, Dr. Chase and I were all talking about, you know, some of the different things we've done as we're compiling this information. And we really accomplished a lot in a year. And it's really been a great year. And I'm looking forward to the feedback I get from the committee and some of the work that we do as now we start thinking about our goals for next year. And that's kind of what the summer's about is really, you know, making sure our staffing is all set and making sure our professional development is ready to go. And we're excited about the start of the new school year. And we're excited about the start of the new school year. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Vedala. Okay, next item, we will go to item six, Public Participation. Is anyone in the audience today that would like to come forward and speak? Opportunity to do so now. Seeing no one, Dr. Vedala, anybody? Okay. No one joining us. So we will go to next items. We do have one written communication today, our monthly report from Bay State Textiles. Attained a motion to receive. Actually, I'll turn it over to you, Mrs. Dunn.
Thank you. Motion to receive. Put that out there.
Second.
Thank you.
You've heard the motion to receive the monthly report from Bay State Textiles made by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Swanson. All in favor? That's a unanimous vote. Mrs. Dunn on the item?
I had a great conversation with Bay State Textiles when I was trying to coordinate our donation of the Welch School stage curtain. And thanks to Consigli Construction for helping us with that, they worked in conjunction with Bay State Textiles to be able to have that curtain put on the Welch account. And I'm waiting to see how heavy that was, because of course, it's going to generate money for the PTO. But during that discussion, the woman that I spoke with, we were talking, and she explained to me, I asked her if she could give us some information about the total tonnage of materials that have been diverted out of our waste stream and of course, have generated money for our schools. And she said, yes, she's going to be able to give us a really interesting report telling us all of that, which will be very helpful to you, Mr. Mayor, because it will show how much money we saved you on tipping fees at the dump. There we go. So it's just a really interesting bit of information that I think will help, especially if she was going to try to be able to give me something that we would be able to use at the schools for the kids, for the students, so they could understand the value of recycling and how just, you know, putting a bag of old material in that container can really help in a lot of different ways in the city. So if possible, I'd love to have her come in, the representative come in. She offered to come speak with us, and she was very, very nice to talk with. And I think in the future, we might want to do that.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Swanson?
Thank you. To you and Dr. Vedala, I guess, looking at these numbers, obviously, seeing these numbers that we generate, that we're seeing in the report is phenomenal. Do we have the ability to educate the greater PBD of what of those boxes and what they go towards? Maybe mailers at the school beginning, maybe something with PMP as they send out their monthly invoices? I think most of it's word of mouth through the school community, school communities. I'm willing to bet a lot of people don't know what that actually is, is that they, before I thought it was charity going and being reused. Did not know it was being, coming back and funding us. So I think if we sent some notices out and educate others, could actually generate more for our schools as well, as well as help the mayor out with the tipping fees at the dump.
That's a good suggestion. Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Yeah, Mrs. Dunn?
It is a good suggestion because there are a lot of people who do ask about it. And I know with the senior center, they have been very, very interested in this, and a lot of the seniors in the city are now aware of those drop-off boxes. And they go to the schools to support their grandchildren or just because they want to help out. So there was a whole slice of the population that found out about it, educated about it, and they're following through. And, you know, quite often, you'll see questions on social media where people are asking what to do. And quite a few times, the PTOs are the ones who will respond and explain to people, you know, the benefits of it and some of the rules about it. And it's interesting to follow those conversations, but a bigger publicity campaign would probably help a lot. It would be interesting to see because they, obviously, they keep the data. And that might be nice.
Thank you. Okay, next item is our Subcommittee Reports. We'll just go through the different subcommittees, see if there's any reports this evening. Education Subcommittee, anything to report, Mr. Amico?
Thank you, Mayor. Through the chair, we do have a meeting set up with Dr. Chase on August 3rd at 9:00 a.m. I'm not sure if it'll be Zoom or in person, but details will be followed, and we'll go ahead and post that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amico. Finance Subcommittee, Mr. Olympio?
Nothing to report.
Okay. School Safety?
Nothing to report.
Athletics and Wellness?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing to really report, but I would like to make a motion. I believe that there's come to our attention that there's a need for some additional cheerleading uniforms. And I think the total amount was about $1,250. Is that about right? So it's good to see that there are more people who are participating in any athletics or any events that we sponsor. So in order to accomplish that, I'd make a motion to allocate $1,250 to the athletic department for the purpose of purchasing these five new cheerleading, I think it's five new cheerleading outfits.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. You've heard the motion. I think we all got that email, or I hope we all did. Mr. Hockman summarized it very well. That the cheerleading program has really done an outstanding job and brought a great deal of excitement to our community and pride to our community. And they have, it's a wonderful youth program that's coming up. So it's a program that's expanding and obviously succeeding and doing a terrific job. So I think, speak for all of us, I know Dr. Vedala feels the same way, that this is something we all want to do. So thank you, Mr. Hockman, for that motion. Seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
And then just lastly, I just wanted to wish all the student athletes well. I think tryouts are going to be coming up quickly, quicker than people think, people realize. So good luck to everyone and stay safe and stay cool.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Okay, next Subcommittee, Quality and Standards. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have not got a meeting scheduled at the moment. However, I do have an issue that I would like to bring up. Earlier, and thank you very much for sending the bullying policy review over to the committee. On each of your desks, I put a printout of a digital use policy. And this was sent out yesterday. And because of the timing, I would first like to make a motion to receive it as a late communication, if that would help. So I'll make a motion to receive.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. You've heard the motion to receive as late communication, both items. It's a policy on social media and empowered digital use policy?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody heard the motion seconded by Mrs. Carpenter, all in favor? That's a unanimous vote?
Thank you. And we would not be taking any action tonight. My only request would be that you would support a motion to refer this to the Quality and Standards Subcommittee so that we could work on that as well to get it completed in time for inclusion in the handbooks. Now, I have to apologize. When I printed this, I printed it out really quickly. But in color, there are only two, Mrs. Macarelli, maybe what, three?
Two.
Just two. Two clauses that are additions, and they were printed in red. And it would be so much easier for you to see it, to realize how simple it is for this policy. I will forward that email to everyone so you have the color copy and you can see the changes. But I do think once we bring it before Quality and Standards, it would be, you know, ready to come before the full school committee for discussion. So I'd be happy to answer any questions for anybody. And if there aren't any, I would just like to make a motion that it be referred to Quality and Standards for immediate action, probably in time for our retreat.
Second.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. You've heard the motion seconded by Mr. Hockman. Again, all in favor of that motion, it's a unanimous vote of approval? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next Subcommittee, Parent and Student Advisory Boards. Mrs. Dunn, any update?
Just a quick update, there's going to be a training being planned for the Student Advisory Board members. And as soon as that is set by MASC, I'll be sending that up to Ms. Proudy and Ms. Randall for our student members to be able to participate in that training.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Building and Grounds, Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Building and Grounds met yesterday for quite a while. We started off by talking about the Center School, which is the other big project taking place in the city this summer. And I hand it over to Dr. Vedala to give us an update as the progress of the work going on there.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Hockman. So this summer, we are doing the flooring at the Center School. So we've, the custodians did a great job of, you know, making sure that all the rooms were ready. So on the main part of the building, not the annex, and the main part of the building, they are redoing all the hallways, all the classrooms on the first and second floor of that building, as well as the main office and then down the hall that goes towards the, between the cafeteria and, slash gym, and the kitchen. The kitchen, instead of being tiled, is being resurfaced with rubberized flooring, which will be easier to clean, and it was more cost-effective as well, so they could upgrade the tiles. That work should be done the first week of August, and all the new tiling will be in, and it'll be ready for the start of the school year. So that's a very important project, and I thank Mr. Mayor and all of the work that has gone into this. But I think it's a really big step forward for our families as they return to school at the Center this year.
Thank you, Dr. Vedala. We then went on to talk about the state of the student enrollment and the staffing population at the Center School and who was going to remain for this 23, 24 school year. And I think that there were 48 students?
Some went back. So we have 43. Forty-three students total will be going to other schools. So in grades one through four, rising one through four, all the fifth graders are coming back, will finish out their year and have their moving on ceremony. But we had 11 first graders, nine second graders, seven third graders, and 16 fourth graders. So for a total of 43 students. And we've worked with those families. A number of students from the rising fourth grade are going to the South School. So that school was able to set up a time for families to come over, meet the principal, meet some of their classmates. And so I know a number of the schools are doing things to welcome the kids in at the beginning of the school year as well. So that has been a smooth process.
Yeah, I heard there might have been some meeting at a local establishment on Margin Street with some of the students and a principal or something. I'm not sure. There was a rumor out there. In any event, so it's nice to, one of the big takeaways for me that was positive about that is the entire fifth grade at the Center School is remaining intact. They're going to complete their elementary years at the Center School as a cohesive unit, and they'll be able to participate in all those rites of passage that take place in the fifth grade year. So I was really, really happy about that. We went on to talk about some planning for the 24, 25 school year that we're probably not going to get into too much detail about tonight, but there is planning going on behind the scenes. I believe that the mayor is in the process of putting together some sort of committee for the Center School that, again, is in the works and will come out, I'm sure, in a timely manner. We talked about custodial staffing. So I think I asked you, Dr. Vedala, if you're able to, and I'm not sure if you had time, but if you're able to determine if there were any deficiencies with any buildings for custodians. Do we know that? And if not, well, we could pick that up at another next meeting. But I want to make sure, we want to make sure that we have sufficient number of custodians in each school building. I think that there was an issue for the past couple of years, COVID being a problem with that as well. But, and then we just very quickly brushed upon the reorganization of the custodians and tradespeople, and we really didn't get too much into that. I did want to put before the superintendent and the administration the opportunity to put a plan together for the $400,000 that we allocated for maintenance of our building. So that's in the works. We also talked about the roadways and the parking lots of PBD Veterans Memorial High School and the disrepair that they're in. So we will, I think, talk through the mayor's office and maybe to DPW about that. And that was really the extent of the meeting. One thing that we didn't get a chance to talk about that I'd like to briefly talk about and make a motion on tonight is, you know, way back when, when we were in the Kylie, I don't think we ever had it when we were here, but the school committee had a meeting room. We had an office space at the Kylie where we had file cabinets where we were able to keep our materials. And we had a little, you know, it was, it couldn't have been 50 square feet. I mean, it was a small room. But it was a little place where we could, you know, you know, step out of, you know, a meeting if we needed to, or if we needed to leave papers and we wanted to get them. During the course of a meeting, because the topic was being discussed, we were able to go into our file cabinets and do that. Anyway, I'm going to make a motion that a room be designated for the school committee here at the Higgins Middle School. So move.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. You've heard the motion seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Any questions or discussion on the item? Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. Through the chair, Dr. Vedala, do you have any idea where that would be?
I do not. But if that's the will of the committee, we can certainly have a discussion about what, you know, with Mr. Busey, what the space parameters would be that you would need and how we could help accommodate that. If it needs to be a separate room that's designated, or perhaps some space or cabinets in one of these offices that we can use as a breakout space, whatever makes the most sense. I mean, I'm happy to work, you know, collaboratively to see, you know, what the needs are and, you know, hopefully to come to some resolution.
Yeah, I do recall that space that we had through the chair to Mr. Hockman. I think time has evolved. I think one of the big concerns we had back then was we had a lot of paperwork, a lot. I don't think we have quite as much now because everything's on our laptops. But there are, one of the concerns I have about that space is that the file cabinets or the place that we can leave our documents, because sometimes those are very sensitive, that it's a secure locked cabinet, because we did all have that as well at the other location. And while a lot of things are not printed, a lot still are when we come into a meeting that might be last second and that we might want to store in there. So whatever the spaces that you do find for us, which I do appreciate, because we don't necessarily hold meetings or meet with people, generally, it's over the phone, or sometimes people want to talk to us, and that would be a great space to do that. So yeah, I'm in support of that, and I'm interested to see what you come up with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter and Mrs. Dunn.
I only laughed because I know how full the building is. But I think it is a good idea because I think it would be helpful to the members. There, as you said, there is still a lot on paper. And there are documents that we really do need to have access to. I will be honest with you, I would love to be able to have a copy of our policy manual there. I used to carry it to every meeting. Two rotator cuffs later, I can't carry that book around. And it would be helpful if we had it so anybody could look at it. And I know it could be online too, but you know, I still believe in paper also. So I have a lot, anything on your computer is in paper in my office. But I do think it's a good idea. As you said, people might want to speak with a member, you know, privately or not, just as a spot to go in and be able to prepare for a meeting if you're here early, or, you know, to be able to put things in there that are getting ready for a meeting. It would be very similar to what the city council has. So I think it's a very good idea, and I do hope you can find some space somewhere in this building that would be conducive to that.
Okay, Mr. Swanson?
Sorry, through you, Dr. Vedala.
Sorry, through to Dr. Vidal. I guess with that, I would also want to understand the security concerns, how we would act during school hours and whatnot, if you can define that as well for us. Make sure those are all covered. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Swanson. All right, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Huckman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huckman. I apologize for not being able to attend the meeting yesterday. I had a conflict that was unexpected. I did want to mention on the topic of custodians, we are in a better place, thankfully, now than we were a couple of years back. I do believe there's still, I want to say two, maybe three open positions. I don't know if they're school or city, but I believe there's two or three open positions. However, we do have a number of applicants, and I know interviews are scheduled for next week. So I feel like we're in a much better position now on that. I would expect by the start of the school year, we will have a full complement, both school and citywide.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that's my understanding, too, in speaking to custodians and some other folks, that we are in a far greater place, a better place than we were a couple of years ago, and it's tweaking a couple at this point. I think at one point, we had like nine vacancies, and it was difficult.
I feel much better about that, so thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, on that, on the topic with facilities, something came to my attention that really surprised me. This was, gosh, I think it was last week or the week before, at the Welch School OAC meeting. We needed to have six cafeteria tables moved from the Welch to the Burke. And we were told that the facilities department did not have a truck that could handle that, which surprised me. Thankfully, Consigly has been helping us with different things like that, and they offered to transport those tables. But I'd just like to ask if we could, in conjunction with finding out about custodians, if we could be told what equipment there is for facilities, if there's something that's needed to be able to complete some of the work around the schools. So when the reports are generated, if we could also have some information on that, that would be helpful.
Good idea, Mrs. Dunn. We have a number of vans, but I do not think we have large trucks in that department. Usually, those are the Department of Public Services. But I think we can get a detailed list.
Yeah. I was just thinking, you know, like a pickup truck, but apparently no. So if we've got anything.
I'm surprised to hear that, because we could certainly, we could certainly have the Department of Public Services cut up on that.
Yeah, yeah.
But we can get a detailed list on that, what the vehicles. I know we've ordered a number in our last capital request as well. You know, it's amazing. I'm going to vent for a little bit. I did it at the city council meeting, at the last city council meeting. But we've ordered a number of vehicles, two fire trucks, and then some DPW vehicles, plow trucks, and some other items. For a, just to give you some perspective, on a fire truck, there's a three-year wait. We are ordering trucks now that we will not be delivered for 33 to 36 months. We just received a fire truck about six weeks ago, that's now in operation, that we ordered three years ago. So it's just very frustrating that. And it's not as bad for DPW vehicles and other larger trucks, but it's two years on that, those items. It's amazing. So that's why we're ordering trucks now, you know, just for the future, hoping, you know, that we'll have them in a couple of years to replace ones we expect. So it's kind of changed the whole process in terms of ordering large vehicles and things. So frustrating time. But we'll get to that list as to what we have.
Thank you. In all honesty, the comment was made that facilities would, could ask DPS if they had anything that could be used, but they didn't think there would be anything there. So, as I say, Consigly stepped right in and said, no problem. But I just, I think we need to know, just in general, what we have.
Mrs. Dunn. One other item I did want to mention, and this was a vote that was made before COVID a few years ago. And it's just kind of, other things have taken our attention away, but I wanted to bring it back this summer. And I spoke to Dr. Vidal about it some time ago. But there was a motion made, I believe it was school committee member Dave McGinni sometime back, to dedicate a street that's in the Higgins campus after Jim Leakos. Jim was a 20-year school committee member, then went on to serve 12 years at the city council. I believe he's the longest-serving elected official in city history with 32 years. Jim's very much alive and doing well. But we, I wanted to bring that back. I, Jim is a friend, somebody who I respect, and I know he gave a lot of time and effort. He was here for the Higgins Middle School votes, very supportive on a number of the other school projects. So I was talking to Dr. Vidal. I would like to do that this summer to dedicate. There's a number of streets that potentially could be used here, roadways, and we're going to coordinate the right spot. It would certainly be ceremonial. It won't be listed as a street in terms of mailing or anything of that nature. But it was a unanimous vote that was made some years ago by the school committee that I felt like we need to honor. And now that I think we're situated, I wanted to bring that forward. So I'll let everybody know we're going to work on that and come up with the right date and the right way in order to do that. So knowing Jim, I don't think he'll be really excited about it. He does not like attention in that way. But somebody like him, I think it's a nice gesture to show dedication, again, to our longest-serving elected official. Yes, Mrs. Dunn?
He was upset about having Leakos Way placed out there, and that was just too bad. He deserves to have it named for him. I know it was one of the two drives next to the school. But is there any, are there going to be any traffic changes with the public service building being placed on the property here? Have you reached that point yet?
Well, I, yes, we've been moving along with some planning. No, we don't have a final plan yet for that. What I did want to ask, and I was going to talk to Mr. Huckman, if we can do a school committee building and grounds meeting on that item relatively soon. We have a tentatively planned community forum regarding the public safety building for here at the library for August 9th. I mean, excuse me, at the auditorium for August 9th, in which we'll be presenting some of the design ideas and to get community input and feedback as to things that they would like to be a part of, police station and fire headquarters, emergency management, things of that nature. So I wanted to see maybe if we could do a, maybe even a Zoom meeting that we can set up, you know, in the next couple of weeks for a building and grounds, to talk about that. I can give some updates and have, Dan Doucet has really been the leading principle on that in terms of the work. And, but no, we haven't got to that point. I don't expect any major changes from what I know so far. I think things will fit very nicely into the overall campus here, but I want to make sure everybody's up to date on where things stand. There's still a lot of planning to go. This is probably two, three years out at best. But we want to have a community forum and start to get some things out that the public might like to see for their department. So, yes, Mrs. Dunn?
I'm really glad to hear that you're doing that, because I will tell you that the school committee does need to be formally notified of the progress and the process. Under the law, the school committee is responsible for the buildings and grounds of all of the schools, and they are under our control and supervision. So this is going to be a big change to a property that we have responsibility over. And I would like to ask if there has to be any type of a property change as far as taking that, taking that land and ceding it to the city, and to make sure that it's not going to impact on any requirement that we had to follow for the Higgins Middle School, because there are requirements of space for buildings that depends upon the population of the school offhand. I don't know what they are, especially here for Higgins. But I know that when we were going through the process of renovating, well, renovating, basically rebuilding Higgins, we had to look into the property ownership and any of the restrictions on the property to make sure that everything was done properly. So I would, I would ask that you do that, and if possible, if you, if you could have that meeting definitely in person with the school committee so that we know what's going on, it would be important. And it would be very respectful of the role of this committee.
I did want to mention the representative from the school committee that I asked was Mr. Amico. So he's been a member of the committee, as well as Julie Dagel, who is on the city council Ward Four representative. So they've been a part of some of it. There's really only been a few meetings. We're not too far along yet, because that's why I want to have the community meeting. John Blodgett, our Essex County DA, is a part of the committee and some city officials. So it's exciting, but you're right, there's some legal questions. So I'll coordinate with Dr. Vidal and Mr. Huckman, see if we can set up a meeting. I'll have our city solicitor, Dawn Kahn, there as well, and other city officials.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Report, Special Education Parent Advisory Board, Mr. Olympia?
Yes, thank you. I'll be working with Ms. Crompton over the next few weeks to put out the schedule for CPAC, CPAB in the coming year. Thanks.
And the very busy City Council Legislative Delegation Committee, Mrs. Carpenter?
You won't believe it. There's nothing to report at this time.
Redistricting, any update?
Just quickly, in the building and grounds committee meeting, when we were talking about the center school and how that's going to plan out, we, I do plan on seeing if we can get the current version of the redistricting committee to reconvene for a meeting or two to update some of the work that we did that might be utilized in the center school project. So I just wanted to report that out, and if any of them are listening, I don't want them to be shocked when I text them over the course of the next week or two.
Thank you, Mr. Huckman. Performing arts, Mr. Swanson?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next item, last item, new business. We do have a couple of items, the electric bus grant. Mrs. Dunn, turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to make a motion to request that the board, let me phrase it properly. I would like to have the school department apply for an electric bus grant and work with Healy Bus to see if that would be viable. So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. You've heard the motion seconded by Mr. Swanson. Mr. Rippon, did you want to comment on that item, or Dr. Vidal?
So I asked Mr. Rippon to come today. We have looked at this grant. I do think it warrants some discussion. There are a couple of concerns with the grant that I did want to put forth, again, for our discussion. The grants are to purchase buses, but they're not for infrastructure, and I'm not sure that we can maintain the infrastructure of the charging stations and things like that. So I do think that there would be a bigger discussion that we would need to have with the city about if we were to purchase new buses for our fleet, how we would maintain them and the charging stations and the infrastructure that we would need. And so I asked Mr. Rippon to do some homework on this. He got some answers. He did talk to Dan Doucet, so he's happy to answer some questions, too. But I, you know, I just wanted to put it out there. I think, you know, whether we apply for the grant or explore applying for the grant, there's more information that we would like to have, because I do think the grant is limited to the physical buses and not the infrastructure. And I just want to make sure that we're ready for that. So, Mr. Rippon, if you'd like to share, if it's okay with the committee, if you could share some of the information he has, and then we can answer any questions.
Thank you. So this is actually the second installment. I'm sure you know this, Beverly. The first installment was last calendar year. Those, that was almost a billion dollars, 912 million, to be exact. There are 10 different regions the EPA has. We're in region one, and that's New England. Within New England is, of course, Massachusetts. Just to highlight in doing the research, there's actually the EPA grant. And then if, you know, there's a supplement, which is the Massachusetts CEC or Clean Energy Center grant. The issue is twofold. One, the priority given, so in the first round, five districts got a total of almost $30 million in Massachusetts. Those districts, and you'll see a prevailing theme, New Bedford, Lawrence, Fall River, Lower Pioneer Valley, and then, for whatever reason, Upper Cape got one bus. And the priority are for high-need districts get priority. High need is defined as having a priority, not priority, a poverty rate in the municipality of at least 20%. PBD rest is about seven. Another priority is a rural area. That's why Lower Pioneer Valley, where it's located, got it. Other priorities are being a district that has more than 35,000 students. And so all these awards were only for high-need districts. And the other thing that, and again, I'm all for clean energy. I think we all are. And I, the grant requires both the pace for the bus and the infrastructure both, which is expected. And given that we're high need, not high need, so example, these districts I mentioned get $395,000 per bus, which will cover the bus and probably not a lot else. And again, you have, you're required to put in the infrastructure and charging stations. The other thing is timing, and I'm not afraid to do anything. I just, the deadline is August 22nd to submit to EPA. And I guess, I don't know what the plan would be to, because you have to talk about where you're putting these charging stations, and the city has to make, my sense, a multimillion-dollar commitment to supplement the funding to put in these, because you have to talk about what the grant's expected to pay, and then by, you know, what the city is expected to contribute. That's what I have to offer.
Actually, if I may, Mr. Mayor, thank you. That would have, that would have been what I would have wanted at the next meeting, so you headed it off. Honestly, I did not know the details of the grant. I just thought it really sounded like something we might want to explore because of the green energy and finding out, you know, if Healy Bus needed any assistance with that, because I know it had to be for buses that you owned, and, you know, we own our own, but we rent from him if that was something that would work out. But I didn't know, it didn't include the infrastructure, and I have to admit, I was, I'm disappointed to hear it because that was something that we had talked about putting at the Welch School as one of our green initiatives there, and we were not able to follow through on that one at the moment. But no, you already, you already answered the question, so thank you, Mr. Rippon. I'll withdraw the motion?
Sure.
I mean, we can certainly talk to Healy and continue to explore this, but I don't know that we're necessarily ready to apply for this grant. But I think Healy was an avenue we didn't look at. So because they were outside of the city of the bus yard, being not in PBD, the infrastructure would be different. But we can ask them, and I can come back to you with some more information.
Okay, then I'll leave the motion there. I think it would be something that at least we could look into now, and hopefully down the road, there'll be more grants or more incentives to be able to do anything possible to have, you know, economical transportation for the community, and it could help in other ways. If we were able to get funding to put in charging stations for the buses, maybe it would work for some of the vehicles for, you know, for facilities of public works. You never know. And I don't think you'd be looking at, making an electric fire engine, but I do know they have them. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Dunn, and thank you, Mr. Rippon, for that information. I did want to mention that we will be announcing this actually probably in the next week or so. We were able, the city was able to get a grant, cobble it, add it to some funding we got as from Community Development Block Grants and some Community Development Authority money. We're going to be doing a project in our downtown. That includes new lighting, new, new parking meter system, and also some EV stations at some of the downtown parking lots. So Nichols Lane, the Foster Street, behind the courthouse. So each of those, I'm not sure of the exact locations, but we'll have some EV stations there as well. So we were very fortunate to be able to get that grant to do some other work. We have, we'll be parking like some other cities now have moved towards where it's kiosks and, you know, you can get an app and things of that nature. So we're going to be unrolling that or announcing that and then rolling that out over the fall. So pretty excited about that. But that's, well, it was a very competitive grant. We really weren't sure if we were going to get it because they do tend to, particularly the EV stations, give opportunities to other cities that we don't quite fit with. So it was great that we were able to get a piece of that for some work here in the city.
That's great. I'll be honest, the way that I was finding out about the EV stations was talking with Mark Whiting at the North Shore Mall, finding out how they did it, and he was a wealth of information. of information.
You know what, I'm glad you brought that up. I did want to mention, and I think we have touched on it before, but Mark Whiting, the North Shore Mall manager for 20-plus years, is retiring at the end of this month. Mark has been a huge advocate for PBD schools. The biggest contribution certainly that they have made was the Simon Youth Academy, Learning Academy over at the mall, which has helped countless students and their families. So he's retiring. We're going to be giving him a special gift from the city coming up here shortly. Again, he's not one that wants a lot of attention as he's retiring, but he's contributed not only to our school system deeply, also our police station where we have an outreach center over at the mall, but also the children's museum. He was one of the original people that were a part of that effort. So he, as an individual, has contributed in many ways. So just wanted to mention him since you brought him up. Mrs. Dunn?
I know you're going to honor him at the city, but I was wondering, could we honor Mark here after he retires? His life has to settle down a little bit, but if we could invite him back here and have a small ceremony as well to honor him, because he is still going to stay involved with the schools, he's going to continue reading in classrooms and he's definitely just going to take a sabbatical from work, but he's not going to slow down at all.
Yeah, I don't see that guy slowing down. That's right. That's another valuable contribution he's made. I know he cares deeply about that program. Excellent. So just want to mention that since his name came up, he's made a deep contribution to PBD. All right, well, thank you, Mrs. Dunn, for bringing that forward. And the second item under new business is the FY23 grant list, which I believe has been provided to us by Dr. Vidal. Mrs. Dunn, any questions or any, by any committee members?
I just wanted to say thank you. I wanted us all to be able to have the grants and, you know, just to make sure that we, now that we have that list, if when we're preparing our budget or doing any financial discussions, that we'll always have this type of information available to the committee members when they're having discussions.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. All right. That concludes the agenda for this evening. Items for the next agenda, our next meeting right now is scheduled for, our regular school committee meeting would next be August 22nd, 2023. We do have our school committee retreat, which is August 8th, but the next regular school committee meeting would be Tuesday, August 22nd, 2023 at 7:00 PM right here at the Higgins. So items for that agenda will be handled in the regular course and I appreciate everyone's work tonight. Good meeting. Thank you, everyone.